We certify our closed session. Any concerns, comments? If not, Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Creaker.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hart.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Heskey.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you, Judy. And if you would stand, we'll have our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Let's pray, please. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for this day. We give you thanks for our health and strength. We ask that you would join us here in these chambers tonight as we deliberate the issues of our city. And we pray, Heavenly Father, that we will make decisions tonight based on what's in the best interest of those that we serve. And we always make our prayer in your son's name. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have, or I have the pleasure of presenting two, one certificate tonight and one resolution, and I'm gonna do that now. If I could get Connie Sled and if you want to bring the gentleman that's with you to your left, Connie, we'd be like, see you at the podium, if we could, please. It's nice, a little bit bittersweet in that, in presenting this certificate of appreciation to Connie, that's a sure sign that we're losing a great member of our school board. I've had the pleasure of, excuse me, of working with Connie for the many years that she's been on school board. She is certainly an advocate and a good friend to the students of the school system. She has certainly made a lot of inroads for the city of Pecosin. She's represented us well. She's represented our school system well. And quite frankly, Connie, I don't know how you would've done it any better. You are indeed a class act.
Thank you.
And we are going to miss you. The certificate of appreciation simply reads, "Is awarded to Constance B. Sled for invaluable service as a member of the school board from July the first, oh four, till June the thirtieth of this year," and that's just about here. So Connie, it is with a sense of regret that we as a council present this to you, but we look to have you join more boards and more commissions to serve the city of Pecosin in the future.
We feel a pleasure.
And the microphone is yours, if you'd like to say something.
Just like to thank council, this council, for the wonderful experience of working with you and previous council, particularly former councilman Buddy Green, for kind of throwing my name out there, that leap of faith. It's been quite a pleasure, and thank you all.
Thank you. I see Mr. Spruill, our band director's here. Mr. Spruill, if you could join me, and if you've got some members, and Jennifer, would you like to? You sure? Okay. Okay, Brianna, welcome, welcome. Again, it's quite an honor, as we receive in this community by, whether it be through newspaper or internet, but there's always something going on with the youth of our community. Not only has this band, our high school band, made a mark on our community, it's made a mark on the Commonwealth. And, you know, our hearts, Mr. Spruill, just, our chest just kind of swell with pride when we think of the accomplishments that you have made, that the students in your band have made, and what great ambassadors you are and they are for this city. And we're just so appreciative. And because we're appreciative, we'd like to present you with this resolution, and I'd like to read it. It's a resolution, recognition of the Pecosin High School Islander Marching Band. Whereas the Pecosin High School Islander Marching Band has for the second year in a row received recognition as a Virginia Honor Band, the highest honor a band can receive from the Virginia Band and Orchestra Directors Association. And whereas this recognition set a first in school history for consecutive awards, and is the fifth time this honor has been bestowed upon the band overall. And whereas it is befitting that the band and its director be recognized and commended for this outstanding accomplishment. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Pecosin, Virginia, Section One, that special recognition is given to the members of the Pecosin High School Islander Marching Band for receiving the distinction of a Virginia Honor Band for the past two consecutive years. Section Two, that the band director, Doug Spruill, is to be commended for his outstanding leadership and dedication to the band. And Section Three, that this resolution shall be in effect on and after its adoption, and a framed copy be presented to the Pecosin High School Islander Marching Band to be appropriately displayed. Mr. Spruill, it is, it's an honor for me, on behalf of council, indeed on behalf of all citizens of Pecosin, to present this resolution to you. Thank you so much. And the microphone, Brianna, if you'd like to say something, you're welcome.
I'd just like to thank the city council for the continued support of the Islander Band over the past few years. Thank you.
It is truly a pleasure to teach in a community with the support of you folks here, both you and our school board. Just wonderful, you're all involved in the community, and you support us, and I just want to say thank you for that. And it's a pleasure to teach here, and it's really due to wonderful kids like Brianna here, who make it easy for me, so thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, we'll move on. I tell you what, we do have another guest here. We have Mr. Ted Heinofen, who's the executive director of HRSD. And Mr. Heinofen, if you would, sir, we would just like to have a few words from you to the public, explaining the piping that they're seeing along Victory Boulevard and what that's all about.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to come for you tonight. Always a pleasure to talk to this board and all the boards in the region we represent. We are celebrating our 70th year of treating wastewater in Hampton Roads. We like to think of ourselves as the grassroots environmental organization of Hampton Roads. We were formed by public referendum in 1940 to clean up the Hampton Roads, and we think we're doing a great job. We are an organization that cares deeply about the environment. Project we're updating you on, and we'll get you a diagram of it in a minute, is a $5.7 million pipeline project that was originally conceived in our development plan in 1990. Unfortunately, like the rest of the wheels of government, sometimes we don't move that fast, but actually we do a lot of long-range planning. So we thought about this project since 1990. It's now about to come to fruition. This is, again, $5.7 million project. We've awarded the contract, and it's really to do a couple things. One is to relieve pressures in the Pecosin city system, which during wet weather sees some high pressures due to the inflow and infiltration we get in our systems, both your system and ours. And then the other piece is, currently Pecosin's served by one linkage to the rest of the regional system. It runs down With Creek Road. You see it off the side there in a very sensitive environment. If that was to fail, we'd have no way to serve you. So this project came along 20 years ago as something we wanted to put in place. We're finally there, we're ready to do it. It's a 24-inch forest main. We looked at a number of alternatives on how to get it from here to there. Unfortunately, in the 70 years we've been in existence, it's getting harder and harder to find a corridor to run a pipeline. Everything that's out there already in right-of-way is filled with utilities. These are not small pipes. We're putting a 24-inch diameter pipe in. It's almost a three-mile run from With Creek Road to 17, where we'll tie into some of our existing facilities there. So when we looked at corridors to run on, we obviously would like to stay within the right-of-way. In this case, we weren't able to do that, and we're have to jump out of the right-of-way slightly and run parallel to the right-of-way. Originally, we were gonna have to take down a little more space, but working with Pecosin staff and with our contractor, we've been able to reduce the amount of clearing that's gonna be required there. We have the easements to clear more land than we're actually gonna have to clear. We've reduced it by 33 percent. So we're gonna have to clear 20 feet, parallel to the right-of-way, along the edge, northern edge of the right-of-way, pretty much from the Pecosin city line to where it's shown there on the road that turns in behind the food line. That's required to put the line in. You can see in the green up there, the shaded area, that's the deep ditch. It's actually protected waters in the United States, takes permits to get in there, would mess with the drainage, and we couldn't install our facilities in that location. And while it looks like there's a lot of green grass between the pavement and that ditch, that's all reserved for future right-of-way pavement for Victory Boulevard, and we can't actually be in that pavement and maintain our line without disrupting traffic. So we're stuck with going along a parallel line. We don't want to take down trees any more than anyone else does. When it comes to environmental protection, we take it seriously, and it's always a balancing act to what's the best solution. Obviously, we couldn't shut down Victory Boulevard for months while we put this line in. There just isn't any other place along the corridor due to the deep ditches on both sides. So we did choose this par- parallel path. We do have the easements to do that. We're gonna do everything we can, again, to minimize the clearing, and we have got the agreement from our contractor to reduce the amount of clearing by another 10 feet. So we're doing everything we can. It's a great project, it's gonna be very beneficial to Pecosin's wastewater system, and again, further our mission of protecting the waters of Hampton Roads.
All right, thanks, sir. Any questions, Mr. Heinofen? What's your estimated, well, projected end date, I guess?
We actually should, we're actually moving faster in the Pecosin end than we thought. The actual contract's not gonna be complete until early FY11, or early calendar year 11, but will probably be done in the Pecosin section before that. But our contractor has till about March of 2011 to finish the project.
I saw that you've already done some clearing, and you've left some of the trees in there. Is that indicative of what you hope can happen, or are you going to have to take all those, the trees down where you've already thinned?
We're gonna have to take all the trees on the 20-foot right-of-way now. You know, we're gonna do everything we can to just stay right in there and minimize the impact, but there's just no way you can get a 24-inch pipe in
Sure.
At the depths we're putting it without taking the trees out.
And when you're done, are you gonna do anything that might enable more trees to come back, plant some trees or something else?
We're willing to do that, along the edge of the right-of-way. We can't put it right over our pipe, we need to keep that clearing, basically, so we can put some smaller trees without deep roots along the right-of-way, if that would be preferred.
And I think something to come back and help, and one of the reasons I say that is because there's a 40-foot buffer, I believe, that the city requires of trees, correct me if I'm wrong, Randy, 40-foot buffer of trees that's required, and you're going 20-foot into that buffer, so now we're only going to have a 20-foot buffer when you're done. So it would be, from my point of view, it'd be good if we could get some trees put back in where you can when you're done. And I appreciate you putting this sewer main in, because it is bad when we get infiltration during storms, and basically the sewer line, it just stops. And so, you know, this is something we need to do, I agree.
Your estimate, your estimate of fiscal year 11, is that operational? In other words, you will be able to, not, the pipe won't just be in the ground, but you'll be able to send the
Send flow in that pipe.
And that'll go up to Grafton area or whatever.
Right.
So the people of Pecosin, obviously, are concerned about what goes in Pecosin, but obviously State Route 171 is important to them as well. Is there gonna be any delays? And as you get up around TAB High School, it looks to me like you kind of get off Victory Boulevard a little bit. Is that, am I reading that right?
We've actually done the work up around the high school, and that's where we're tying in this 24-inch.
Okay. So once you get up to where you make the turn there at TAB High School, you're essentially tying into existing pipe.
Existing pipe, yes.
And you'll be done. Okay.
The pipe in Pecosin, is it all above ground?
No, it's all, it'll all be in the ground.
In ground?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Heinofen, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You cleared, cleared the air for us a lot. We really appreciate you taking your time to be here.
Thanks for your support. Your staff's been very supportive as well. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate. Okay, let's move on to our audience for visitors. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address council on any topic, we'd like to hear from you now, except if you're here to speak at the public hearing regarding the sale of publicly owned property. But anything other than that, if you'd like to speak, we'd like to hear from you now. Yes, ma'am?
Hello, my name is Cindy Zimmer, and I live at 17 Canal Drive. I'm actually here representing my church, Tabernacle United Methodist Church. We are having vacation Bible school coming up on July 12th through the 16th. That's week after next, and we will have, begin at 5:00, and we'll have dinner for everyone. Our messages begin at 5:30, 5:30 to 7:30, and we cover ages from four years old up through sixth grade, and we also have an adult class. So if you can come and bring your family and enjoy. And Tabernacle is at 831 Pecosin Avenue, and if you're not familiar, that's near the swimming pool, the recreational area on Pecosin Avenue. So I just wanted to come and invite everyone to come and be with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate that. All right, is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am, Danny.
I just wanted to give you one more plug about Kids Island and how hard we've been working. We have been talking to play and park structures. We've talked to a couple of other places, but this seems to be the most-for-the-money playground, and it's the same type of piping that Buck Road Beach had that we all, a few of us went on a field trip with. But Mitt Smith from this company has laid this out for us and has even tried to, we told her a few things that we had picked out in the committee that we thought our children would like from our previous Kids Island, and to kind of still do a theme for the bay kind of thing, and she did the ship thing. And then she's also working on, that we don't have in here, is she wants to try and make the tot section into crab-looking thing, which I thought was cute. But anyway, this, there's two versions. One's $36,000-some dollars, the other one's $29,000-some. It's under the $50,000 that we're hoping that you all will be able to apply towards Kids Island to get it started. It's quite a bit of playground area. It'll house 30 to 50, I think it's actually 60 kids on just this one little section, and then we can do phases as we go along and earn more money in fundraising. But this is something we could put up right away with what you might be able to donate to the Kids Island. And so, and these are also just different areas of things that we picked out that were bigger prints, that you can see what they would like. And we've talked, I've talked to a few kids in the neighborhood, and they kind of helped me a little bit on picking out things, and we tried to remember what our children picked out when we did do Kids Island the first time. So anyways, I just wanted you to see it one more time.
Thank you, Danny.
We have been working on something so that we can get on with building the park.
Thank you for doing that.
And I do appreciate several of you out there helping us refurbish the park on May 22nd. That was really great to see. I appreciate that.
We appreciate you guys, we really do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here, too. Okay, is there anyone else? Mr. McGuire, how you doing?
Mike McGuire, live at 147 North Lawson Road. Brenda Fisher called me last week and asked me if I would again help do some of the legal work for Kids Island, and the answer is yes. But I'm a little bit cautious, and I want to review with you folks some of the history of the past so that we don't put these people in a position that they found themselves in several years ago. For this organization, for them to move forward, they have to form a corporation. Otherwise, who's gonna turn over money to Brenda? Not that she's not a nice person, but that's not the best way to do it. They have to form a corporation, it has to adhere to the charity rules so that it does not have to pay an income tax. The charitable corporations have to have certain wording in their bylaws and their formation documents which prohibit political activity, and most importantly, any benefit going to the directors. So the people that do the work cannot benefit financially from the money that comes in. The problem here is that almost happened before, and one of the reasons, I think, was a priority question on the part of the city, and I am not gonna criticize anything that happened 15 years ago. Most of us can't remember what we did 15 days ago, so we're not gonna go back and look at that. But I want council to understand what these folks are gonna have to do to build Kids Island, and I, in answering Brenda's question, would I help? The answer is certainly I will. But I want, I cautioned her about going any further until there's some, until we talk about some things. And the question that I have is, what is the priority of this project? And I'm looking back now, some years ago, to two events that I was directly involved in, which told me that the priority maybe wasn't as high as it should have been. And I can't say it was a right or wrong decision, because priorities, as you know, depend on what people want, what people say they want, what people need, and whether the money is there to do any of those things. So I'm not gonna say it was a right or wrong priority, but here's what happened. In the mid-'80s, I'm sorry, the mid-'90s, my wife and I bought 12 acres on North Lawson Road. Six or eight years later, sewer became available, and we looked at what we were gonna do with it. We offered that land to the city to be used as a park. And the answer came quite quickly. No, there's no interest. Okay, well, what did the city turn down? And I'm not saying they should or should not have spent money on it, because I don't know how much money was there. I don't know what the interest was. It was 12 acres of waterfront, 1,200 feet of shoreline, marsh, uplands, roads, trails, drainage ditches, a berm. There was cedar, pine, gum, wild holly, wild plum, deer, otter, coon, muskrat, ducks, geese, dove, heron, et cetera. It was a beautiful piece of property. Our first priority was, hey, this would be a great park. Well, okay, it didn't happen. At about the same time, Kids Island was trying to decide what to do with what was left of their money. And I'm gonna pass this out in just a minute, but if y'all would, give me just a minute here. The corporation that was used to generate the money and the enthusiasm and the organization was formed in the spring of '94. In the spring of '95, it was built. In the fall of '96, I got a call from Brenda. I think Brenda confirms there was $68,000 collected 15, 16 years ago. There were $7,000 left over. No one contemplated, hey, what are we gonna do with all this extra money, because the goal was to spend it all on the playground. But there it was left. And the agreement, of course, was confusing. If you're gonna build anything on city property, doesn't the city have to own it? And the answer is yes. Well, that generated a liability question. How do you insure it? And we got approval under the insurance program at the time that it would be insured. Then we had a maintenance question. Who's gonna maintain it? Well, the agreement was, as I recall, was that the city intended to maintain it after it was built. Well, here's the quandary Brenda and her group found themselves in. Brenda, I have to apologize, I don't remember who else was on the board of directors, but it's about a half dozen people. They signed a document promising to adhere to the IRS laws. They're stuck now with $7,000. They can't spend it except on Kids Island. The city was gonna maintain it. There were some efforts and some maintenance early on, but the enthusiasm for the public by that time had waned a little bit. So what do we do? Well, they can't give it to another charity, because now they're favoring one charity over another, and the people that generated that money wanted it for this charity. They can't keep it, they violate the IRS laws. What if it just sits there? Well, if, any of you ever been involved in this situation where you collect money and hold it for someone, sooner or later, someone's gonna ask where it is. You don't need your reputation tarnished by sitting on that $7,000 too long. You gotta get rid of it. So we turned it over to the city under an agreement, and the agreement was that the $7,000 was to be used for prepaid maintenance. Here's an unsigned copy of it, one page, about the simplest contract that Wayne Moore and I have ever been involved in. It was just as simple as you can get. And I'm not sure Wayne had anything to do with it. It may have been me entirely, I don't remember. So we turned it over to the city, and I have no doubt that that $7,000, either directly or indirectly, went to something and that it was maintained to some degree. But when I look at the priorities, what I'm hearing was that it wasn't maintained sufficiently to keep it safe and usable until recent, and recently it was, had to be partially demolished. What I don't want these folks to get into is this, a situation where they work hard, collect money, and then one day the enthusiasm or priorities change. And so from my personal perspective, what I saw out of the two events that I was involved in, this offer of land and the inability or the failure to maintain Kids Island, was that this was not high on the city's priorities. And I am not criticizing that, because I cannot and will not go back and say what else should have been done. It was probably the proper thing to do, given the finances at the time. My fear and my advice to Brenda and her group is, if you're going to put forth your effort to raise this money, if you're gonna sign on to the document that makes you adhere or requires that you adhere to the Internal Revenue Code, you need some assurance from the city that they're gonna back you up. And that's my recommendation. So I want to end this, I'm gonna pass out these, I have about a four-year history. It took us four years to get rid of the money. I'm gonna pass this out to you folks, you can keep it. And the last thing I'm gonna say to you is this. If we, the public, come to you and ask for something, and you indicate you want to do it, and you don't, there can be a number of reasons. But the public, that's politics, that's life, that happens. We're dealing now with kids, and I found out tonight that Donna Tappan, sister-in-law, got together a list of people who had done something for the Kids Island. Remember that board, that poster board that's up there? Had probably a lot of names. I know, you, I don't know if you were out there that day, but it takes a lot of enthusiasm to get 300, 400 volunteers on a two-day weekend, on a hot weekend, working, doing manual labor. That tells you something. Anyway, so Donna Tappan sends me a note, and here's a letter from Lindsey Fournier, Now this is the kind of thing lawyers live for. You know, you do work and you're dealing with the public that's right on the edge of the law, and you see all kind of things, and here comes some kid and writes me a letter, okay? Lindsey must have been quite young. Built, B-U-I-L-E-D, okay? Wonderful, with an O, a couple of Os in it. Should, S-H-O-W-D, should go there. Favorite, F-A-V-E-R-E-T. Part, P-O-E-R-T. Anyway, so here's Lindsey. Dear friend, thank you for helping Pecosin build Kids Island. You did wonderful job. Children should go there every day. I give you a big thumbs up. From Lindsey. My favorite part is the zip line with a backward Z. This from Lindsey Fournier, and on the back is a picture of her on the zip line. You can't let these people down. I mean, you can let us down, or change your minds, or change your priorities, but you can't do this. If we're gonna start this thing, we need to finish it. That's the message, okay? Thank you, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Mike, I don't, I don't think we have any questions, but let me just say this, this council is behind these ladies. We don't have to instruct the manager or the city attorney to make sure that whatever agreements that we have to have are not done. And, you know, I'm so confident of Wayne and Randy that I have no trouble making that statement. You know, we've already talked about seed money for Kids Island, and I think most of us here, and some I see in the audience, were there on the very first day. I'm not sure that I'm up to speed on the $7,000 and what events took place, and I certainly am no expert on the IRS codes, but we're not gonna let these ladies get in trouble. We're just not gonna do it, and we're gonna support it the very best that we can. And, you know, you bring, you bring up about the property, I just don't, I guess that's a politician's favorite word, I don't recall. That's what you're supposed to say on the stand or something, I just don't recall when you get off. But I would certainly like, even though it's way late now, be worried about it. But for the life of me, I don't remember any documentation or
There was no documentation, it was all verbal.
Okay.
There was no documentation.
Okay. But anyway, we'll, we'll get Kids Island done. We pledged to do that, and we'll get that done, and in a timely manner. And we appreciate you, Mike, for helping those folks out. And Randy and Wayne will be available to make sure that this city council and this city is protected as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All righty, is there anyone else? I'm sorry, anyone else? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name's Ken McFedrich. I live out on 924 Pecosin Avenue. That's the old stretch of town where we have four square houses and older places and stuff like that down there. I'm gonna ask you in a few minutes I'm going to ask you in a few minutes to consider a request to alter a specific city code. You've probably gotten a, a letter already from Mark Bosson regarding it. Specifically, it's going to be Chapter 70, titled Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places. Before I like, before I tell you about my story, I'd like you to get to know me a little bit about where I am. I'm a new resident of this town. I moved here about two years ago. I rented it for a year before I decided to purchase this property at 924 Pacosa. And I really like it. It's a, it's a great house. It's a pleasant two-story, four-square home, built in 1924, has a pleasant river birch out in the front yard, and this abysmal, straight, concrete walkout there. This crackton has been sinking into the ground, and every time it rains, it gets really, really wet. So I've decided to go back and, and update my front yard and took a look at it all. Now, I've been trying to personalize it and go along as you do that. And tonight, as you drive down Pacosa Avenue, you'll probably see the pile of dirt in the front and the stacks of pavers that'll be going in this next weekend as I put in a new walkway. Well, around Memorial Day, I thought I might also update my driveway. My driveway is old, crush-and-run. Apparently, after talking to Mark Bosson, it was grandfathered in in 1982 when the law was passed. It said you can only have three types of driveway aprons here. You can have what was grandfathered in. You can have bituminous concrete, I guess that's asphalt, or you can have splat concrete on there with a brushed surface. I, I went at it and I looked at it. I didn't know about this law, but Mark was real diligent to let me know about it after I had already replaced and put in these things. These are called cobblestones. I put in 510 cobblestones at the end of my driveway, set it in real nice, not knowing about the law, unfortunately. Mark told me, he says, you know, Ken, these are not acceptable. These are not acceptable standards by the city. And I asked him, I said, so, so what's the problem with it? He said, Ken, you know, it's a, it's a problem we got here. We said, we can only accept these three things because of cost. I said, so tell me about the cost. He says, well, if I have to dig up the culvert at the end of your driveway, I have to put down only what the city allows in the law. I said, okay, I'll hold you, I'll hold you blameless. No problem at all. You don't have to, I'll take my cobblestones and I'll find another place. But they're set in the ground now, Mark. Is, is this an acceptable thing? Mark says, no. And he sent me a nice little letter about it. And I think, Mr. Mayor, you have a copy of it telling me that if I don't have them dug up in 10 days, they're going to come by and take legal actions for it.
They clarify that because I'm not going to come by and take up your cobblestones.
Yeah, no. Well, it says, it says, if this, remove all non-...
I have a copy, I have a copy of the, of the document. Yes, sir.
And he asked for removing brick pavers, but I don't, that doesn't look like a brick to me, never has, but that's, that's mincing. What I'd like you to do is consider the opportunity here for the city to improve its aesthetics. You know, this, we're a colonial city. We've been around for a long time. If I look over here, the date on there is 1631. And that's just 10 years after the pilgrims set foot up in Massachusetts where I grew up as a little kid. But, you know, cobblestones have kind of been a way in a tradition of a lot of places. I mean, they're durable roads there. They're used in a lot of places, and I think it would enhance our own neighborhood. And I'd like you to consider amending our title, our code, to consider durable surfaces to include both brick pavers, cobblestones, as well as the modern concrete and bituminous asphalt. I think it's a, it's a worthwhile thing to look at and to consider for the city. I think it adds visual interest, and it definitely improves property values. We have this old crush-and-run stuff and loose rock, you know? I hate sweeping rocks off the sidewalk every weekend because there's something gets sprayed onto it. It's just, it's a, it's a nuisance. This won't be a nuisance. It will be durable. It'll be solid. And you know, when the city comes by to do it, they can scoop up the, those and put them on the side of the road, and I'll put them back in place afterwards. I'll take care of that. Because that's what I agreed to Mark. I said, Mark, I'll be glad to put them in place. I'll take them up. I'll do whatever you need. But I don't want to be in, in violation. And really, I'm not looking forward to this weekend of pulling them all out again if I, if I have to. I'll do it because it's the law. But I'd rather have you guys consider possibly using durable surfaces rather than the narrow definition of using brushed concrete or asphalt as our city code.
I think it's probably something, and you make some, some extra points, but I think it's something that, that I know all of council is not aware of. I am aware of it because I did get a copy of the, of the memorandum from Mark. I'm just going to ask the manager if he would make council aware of, you know, why we're requiring that, Randy, and, and I know there's some valid reasons for that, but I don't know that all of council has the same information that I have. I did look at your...
Yeah, the explanation that Mark gave me says it wasn't fair to those who had to comply in the past.
And that may very well be the answer in the end. But, you know, I don't think we're going to make that call tonight.
Okay.
But we'll ask the manager if he would just supply the council information to see...
Mr. Wheeler, can I have a dispensation on this to extend this 10-day period until the city can make a decision on which way it should be?
I will do that.
Mr. Wheeler, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Council members, thank you for your consideration tonight.
Thank you.
I hope we'll see a lot more of these around the neighborhood because they do have a neat aesthetic sense to what's going on here in the town. Thank you.
All right, so thank you. Anyone else? Okay, let's move on then to the approval of our minutes, please. We only have one session.
The motion that we adopt the minutes of the regular session of May 24, 2010.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made in second that we adopt the minutes for our regular session, May the 24th, 2010. Any concerns, comments, corrections, additions to those minutes? Okay, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
And Mayor Halsin.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, Judy, thank you. Let's move on to item I. It is a public hearing. It has to do with the sale of publicly-owned property. It's a right-of-way on Wainwright Drive. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this public hearing this evening is to solicit citizen comments regarding a proposal to purchase before-mentioned approximately 10,000-square-foot parcel from the city. Mr. Furth has made an offer of $15,000 for that. Following the, the public hearing, the city council may wish to consider, if, to consider one of three options. One is to deny the offer. You'll find that is option three. Option one is to accept in accordance with Mr. Furth's offer. And finally, option two, which, excuse me, that's option two previously referenced. And option one is to accept the offer, but to include in the asking price the city's costs of the conveyance, which would be an additional $1,123.60, and also to include the five conditions that are listed in your staff report for the folks in the audience. If you don't mind, I'll read those conditions.
Please, please.
Any improvements made to, where in the parcel being sold must be installed in a manner as not to interfere with the drainage of adjacent property. In the event the parcel is improved for ingress and egress, the improvement shall, as a minimum, conform to City of Pacosa's standards for private driveways as set forth in the city ordinances relating to family subdivision. Three, in the event the parcel is improved for ingress or egress, where we have a private driveway where the driveway connects to a city street, the private driveway shall comply with Chapter 70 of the Pacosa City Code. Four, property shall be conveyed by special warranty deed and shall be subject to the rights of others to use a portion of the parcel for access to Wainwright Drive. And five, the covenant shall be included in the deed of transfer. I would note that as this is a proposed sale of city land, we did go the extra step and send notification to all the adjoining property owners, and I think some of them are here tonight that want to speak to this.
Sure. Okay. Anything else? Anyone on staff? Do you know the staff there?
Not unless someone like that anything.
Okay. Let's then open the public hearing and, and ask if anyone in the audience would like to address this issue. Yes, sir.
I'll start off, somebody's got to be first. Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'm John Anderson. I live at 15 Wainwright Drive. I am immediately adjacent to the land that is in, in question. I speak in opposition to the proposed sale. The way I understand, the city originally wanted this land, the land in question, for a continuation of Wainwright Drive at, at a later date. And that land then was supposed to be paved, had curbs, and have gutters. Without commitment, without a committed city following, I do not see that this is going to happen at all. If so, there's nothing to guarantee if a road was built on this land that it would be anything much more than maybe dirt or gravel or lightly paved at best, but with no gutters and no, no drainage there to help with the runoff. Muddy runoff would easily, easily run all over my lawn and the lawn of those, and the land of those that are near me. Dust would increase from the decreased vegetation and the poor road surfaces that would result from this, from a, a road that would be built in there if it was a private road. A city road that was paved and had gutters should be better and would do differently. I understand that this is for Mr. Furth, for him to access that land, but he has an access from Wainwright, from With Creek that he can use to enter back into that land rather than, rather than come and use the land right there and, and tear it up and, and put that kind of a burden upon the people that are there. He could continue on back, as I've seen plans in the past drawn up that dealt with that. This also serves as, as a bad precedent. That land that the city originally wanted, that they originally required for this right-of-way and received for the sole purpose of this, of this right-of-way now is being considered for sale. This is wrong. If the city isn't going to do what they said they were originally going to do when they originally purchased that, when they originally gained that land, rather than sell it, they should give it back to the people that they took it from or that they required it from, rather than, rather than turn around and sell it. It sets a bad precedent for the city to be able to get land like that, and then years down the road, if they decide they're not going to do anything, turn around and sell it when it costs them nothing to get it. Why not turn the land back to the people that own the land to begin with? I think that's only a sense of fairness. Otherwise, any city could turn around and they could, they could wholeheartedly go out and start, not that that's what they're going to do or that you would do, but a city could go out and start getting pieces of land, pieces of property here and there for a particular purpose that they thought they were going to do, years down the road, not do it. Land didn't cost them anything. They turn around and they sell it. Give the land back to the people that it originally belonged to. To otherwise sends a very, very bad message. Again, I'm very concerned about the runoff that's out there. I've been a part of that. I've seen that. The mayor's been kind enough to come out there before. I know that Councilman Freeman's been out there. Binks, when he was out, used to come out frequently. I know Mr. Krieger's been out there, too. And I appreciate each one of you coming out and looking at what we have to deal with out there. But I know beyond a shadow of a doubt, that land is higher than mine. I've got some dirt out there. I'm getting more dirt out there, but I can't build it up three feet to contend with the elevation of that road because it's all going to force it still even more back onto me. It's going to force it back onto my neighbors, and it's going to have a tremendous runoff. If that land behind there is developed with a few houses or many, the decreased vegetation back there and the taper of the land is going to force even more water to coming, and it's going to runoff. And a private driveway, what's, what's, what's to hold the person with a private driveway into not, not having that runoff onto my land or the land of my neighbors? It becomes a private matter then, doesn't it? Or does it? The city shouldn't knowingly sell a piece of land that should give back to the rightful owner and turn it over to somebody who privately could put in a road or some other means of conveyance through there that becomes a detriment to the people that are around them, and then all of a sudden that, it becomes a civil, a civil, a civil matter, and the city steps out of it. There's something fundamentally wrong with that, with that aspect and that kind of thinking. So I'm totally against that. I would ask that the city vote for option three, which I believe is the option that says they can not to accept the proposal. I think that every good reason to do that, and I don't see any, any good reason to sell it at all. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it very much.
All right. Anyone else?
Carol McDowell, 14 Wainwright Drive, and I thank the mayor and many of the members of the council coming out in the past and addressing our flooding situation, which is still of great concern. And I am for option three at this point because I think the city is best equipped to continue addressing our problems with drainage, and it gives you the best option. And I know you care because you've been out there about our problems with drainage. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comment. Anyone else?
My name is Dale Blankenship. I live at 13 Wainwright Drive. And like the other folks have said, we've had several members of city council, Gordon's been out there, Jeff Blummel, I think everybody but Easter Bunny out there at one time, I know they're looking at drainage issues. The biggest problem I've got is, is drainage and the possibility of more runoff coming my way. I've got actually the lowest parts there. The water runs from the Ulysses property now to my gutter to the ditch. Now, we've looked at all those things about putting a bigger culvert going into the ditch. We've dug the ditch out to carry more water theoretically. If you get more water out, you can put more water in it. Now, the problem is the water going in it. One of the unintended consequences we've had, we've dug that ditch out over the years, I don't know, maybe what, two or three times, Gordon? I don't know. I've got another problem now. Now, when there's a good tidal flood, water backs into my yard now. I never had water coming backwards in my yard ever before. So now we've got water coming in from this property. I've got water coming in from the back. I'm not an engineer. I just own a body shop, but, you know, I, I, I know where that problem comes from. Now, another thing that made me a little bit angry, the, we've been out there on several times and we've talked about the city fixing a drainage problem just caused by the, the current landowner. I don't think that's fair. You've got one guy that's created the problem. All of us is, taxpayers have to fix the problem. I think that's wrong. You've got this fellow where we're going to dig his cobblestones up in his driveway. Y'all can't do anything about this guy building up the property that it is right now. If you look at some of those pictures, you'll see all the mud that runs over when, when it runs in, when the rain runs, due to all the dirt he's brought in. He's brought in several more loads recently. So I just, I, I have a real issue with that, and my major concern is the drainage part of it. I've known Terry 40 years. I've got no problem with Terry. I, you know, build any kind of houses you want to back there. But, you know, don't go through, through my neighborhood. We've got enough traffic now going down my road to the houses back there on the Ulysses property. That property back there is not landlocked, so I'd be in favor of option three as well.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, Dave, thank you.
Gordon, City Council, my name is Charles Forrest. I live at 12 Wainwright Drive. Gordon, I've talked to you several times, and several city council people have been out there with this drainage ditches. But Gordon, I want to bring your attention. One time when you were out there, you stated that if any road was out there, ever built there, if it had curbs and gutters. You actually personally told me that in front of several people. All right? And, and right now, we were having a lot more problems than we're having. We all put that deflector bump, like a little speed bump there, deflect that water to the ditch, and it really works. I mean, it helps a whole lot. But the thing is, if this property is sold and you do not have curbs and gutters or you get the proper drainage, will that speed bump still be there? I say speed bump, deflector bump that runs that water away. That person who buys this piece of property could move that excess bump right there, and we would get more water. Personally, I think, I think the city was told, or this gentleman, Tony, he says, he's to give, you know, to donate the property for further development for a road excess. All right, if they're going to have a road excess, it's okay, but I think they need to have curbs and gutters with the proper drainage. Dale, like Dale, he's getting more drainage in behind his house as well as in the front. But that deflector bump has helped a lot. Gordon, I've called you at Christmas Eve night before.
I remember.
I had people that couldn't, visitors couldn't get into the car because of flood. But I personally think y'all just stick to number three, no sale. And if they do sell it, mandatory that this person put curbs and gutters up to that point with proper drainage. And that's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi. Well, I'm here. We live at Seven Bannister Court, which is Wainrye and Bannister in the corner. I haven't lived here long. We just bought a home there in November. I guess our concern is, since we don't know a lot about the history of what goes on, although we did get to see what the water drainage is like during a nor'easter, there's a lot of construction vehicles going to and fro as it is on our street on Wainrye there. And I'm wondering, what does the sale of this property mean? Is there going to be more development back there? And if so, will those vehicles now, those construction vehicles be utilizing our road more? Right now, we have vehicles that park right in front of our house in order to unload and offload big, I don't know what you call them. I'm not a construction person. Bulldozer, backhoe, those type of vehicles. Although my three-year-old and two-year-old little boys love watching those things, I'm a little more concerned about how much more increase of this traffic are we going to see? And since I really don't know, like I said, we're new here, what does this mean to us? What, what is this sale going to, what's it helping to, what's the end result?
Are you familiar with Wainrye at the end? Are you familiar with the right-of-way that we're talking about?
Yes, yes, sir.
Mr. Firth owns the property that intersects with that right-of-way and he does have a proposed development. I don't, there's no copies here. There's nothing in detail to show you tonight. I can't imagine what, we don't have city vehicles down there on Wainrye and Bannister, do we? So I'm not sure about the construction folks or where that's, what's going on down there in terms of construction unless there's...
I, I don't know the vehicles, who owns them. I know though that they, a vehicle comes, parks, has a trailer and they park right in front of the home, our home. They offload the vehicle, unload the vehicle, goes down Wainrye. I haven't followed them down. I've got two little kids, so I can't chase after them, but there's a lot of traffic there.
I wish I could answer that question, but I, I don't know that any of us can.
Okay.
I, I just don't think it's city equipment that's, that's in that neighborhood. But what we're trying to decide here tonight is whether or not the city sells Mr. Firth this right-of-way. Now, this right-of-way was required years ago to prevent landlocking the previous owner of the property that Mr. Firth now owns. That's, that's not something new. I think you'll find that in our zoning ordinances. It, it, you know, that was done years and years ago. So it wasn't that property was taken away from anybody, but the right-of-way was required so that that individual could not landlock another person's property. That's what this right-of-way is about.
So there is a proposed development to go there once the Wainrye...
There is a proposed development. I can't, I don't have plans. I don't know that we've even seen. I can't tell you how many houses. I want to say four, but I'm not 100% sure of that. And that's probably the best I can do to bring you up to speed on what's going on down there.
Okay.
And this has to do with the 50-foot right-of-way at the very end of Wainrye before you make the right on that private road.
All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Well, no, thank you.
Like I said, we're new. We just kind of want to keep an eye on what's going on around our home as well.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. Thank you for coming. Okay. Anyone else?
Hi. My name is Regina Blankenship and I live at 13 Wainrye. I also wanted to add a little bit to that. Over the years, we have had meetings with city council and some of the engineers. They come out and look at the problems that we were having. Years ago, we were told that part of the solution was to widen the ditch under Bacosa Avenue going to the canal. And that was on one of the proposals for city council and I think it's number two in the CIP, I think is what they call it. I don't see that happening anytime soon. And I understand that. But our concern is that if this is sold and that new houses are built back there, even though they would be responsible for their runoff and trying to figure out where it's going to go, we haven't been able to do this in the last 20 years, figure out where this runoff is supposed to go, and it's getting worse. And if you build more houses back there and you don't address the issues of where that water is supposed to go, you're going to adversely affect the ones of us that are on Wainrye now. If the money is not there to widen Bacosa Avenue, that ditch for the runoff to go with the houses that are there, where is the water going to go for the four houses that is being proposed? Paperwork is great. I've got this, one of the city engineers telling me that we need a new covert in front of our house. We have one. She's telling me we need another one. There's no money for that. That's not even on the plan anywhere. So now we're asking to send this land so there's more houses that can be built when we don't even have the money to fix the problem that we have now. If the city council does vote to sell this land, that $15,000 should go towards putting that covert on Wainrye or widening that pipe that goes under Bacosa Avenue, but that's not going to touch it. And that pipe apparently is listed with a bunch of other, other areas in Bacosa that need to be fixed. Hopkins, somewhere else, down Bacosa Avenue, I think, there's a couple of them listed. It's not a very high priority and I understand that. I'm an option for, for voting for option three for right now until city council fixes our drainage problems or requires that the new person come in with streets, curbs, gutters, the covert and the pipe under Bacosa Avenue. If that's what the engineers say that's what it needs, then that's what needs to be done. I don't think Mr. Firth should have to pay for all that, but I also do think we should have to pay for that because if it keeps raining like it does, I'm going to have water in my garage again. And I'm sure no one on city council wants me to call them when I have to call my flood insurance because of rain, run water, not a nor'easter, just normal rain. Thank you.
Thanks, Regina. Okay. Anyone else? Karen?
Mayor, councilmembers. My name's Terry Firth. I'm the one proposing to buy the property. And I understand and realize there's a water drainage problem down at the end of Wainrye. And I'm not allowed to do anything on this property or mine that adversely affects their drainage problem. I mean, that's in the city building department right now. They, they tell me I'm not allowed to do anything on this property that my engineer doesn't show that it doesn't negatively affect anybody. You know, whether it be my land, I can't increase more on mine. I can't increase more on theirs. I can't increase more on this piece of property. It's got to show where it's at least no more water drainage problems with what I'm doing than it is right now. And that's city ordinance. So there's no problem with that. And the part about I've got another right-of-way is not correct. It showed it on an old plan, but the right-of-way that went through to Bacosa Avenue is no longer any good. It, it was, it was written up, so it was only good if Mickey West built in, back there for his children. If that happened, the right-of-way was good, but that was the only thing it was written up for. So my title company and my attorney says that that's no good. I can't go that way. Wainrye Drive is the only possible way to this property. So I hope y'all vote to sell it. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Terry. Is there anyone else? Okay. Let's close the bubble. Go ahead. No, go ahead.
I think I've heard enough that I'm at least confused, okay? Because, and I think with that confusion, I'm sure I'm probably not the only one up here. So I'm going to make a motion that we postpone a decision on this to start with. But then I think we need to have some discussion to clarify. But that's my motion is to postpone a decision for the night.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. Let's, let's do the vote and then we'll discuss it, okay?
This is after the motion?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We can do that. Okay. Judy, would you please?
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye, with a stipulation that I'll say in a minute.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Hutt?
Aye.
And Mayor Helfst?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried. I think that was seven to zero.
Okay. Now we have...
Okay. I guess, because I'd rather it come from staff than it come from council's interpretation. I'd like to hear a couple of things. I guess, one is, and I guess I'll address some of the speakers who said that the city's kind of stepping aside and avoiding responsibility. I can tell you what the city is doing. The city is trying to get rid of a parcel of property that we are controlling with no, or what we thought was no attainable gain for the citizens of Bacosa and trying to return it to the tax rolls. We're doing this on several pieces of property. Okay? We're, we're looking at, at trying to get property back out into private hands. I don't take into any avoidance of responsibility. I didn't know that there was this level of concern about the drainage, but we will certainly get involved in that in a, at a, probably the next meeting. The other thing is that the property was not taken from an individual. The property was donated as part of a development concept. We don't take people's property as the city. We have never condemned a piece of property in this city. Okay? At least not on my term on council. So we don't take people's property and then sell it back off to somebody else. So getting those two discussion points down and kind of put to bed, the only reason we're discussing this is Mr. Firth had brought a development to the table, and I believe it was more along the lines, and don't quote me on this, but small or family-type subdivision. I don't know which one we were going with. And the first question is, does selling this property make any difference to their rights to develop that property?
Can I get Debbie to address that?
Sure. Deb?
In other words, my base question here, so that everybody's on the same page, is if the city takes option three and doesn't sell the property, can the landowner still develop his property?
He can still develop his property. However, in order to use the paper strip right-of-way, he has to improve it to city standards, which would mean a 50-foot wide street with 32 feet of pavement and curb and gutter.
Okay. But either way, the city would then have to, what, then sell the property or assign the easement to be improved?
No, we would still maintain ownership. Mr. Wright, I mean, Mr. Firth would just have a right to develop it to serve his property.
To serve his property. So would it be the entire strip?
Yes.
All right.
So your, your comment here where it says comply with chapter 70, that means curb and gutter?
If, based on the conditions that you have before you, that particular section is just stating that we want a certain type of driveway entrance there to connect to the existing end of Wainrye Drive.
That's only the entrance, not the driveway itself.
Correct.
But what would chapter 70 require?
Chapter 70, and that's not my area of expertise. It's public works, but I'm assuming that it's going to require some type of asphalt and/or concrete that was mentioned to you earlier this evening about the 924 Bacosa Avenue address. It basically specifies what kind of construction material would be allowed within our right-of-way.
And as part of the sale, we could, or conditions for sale, we could actually require what we wanted. Is that correct?
Correct. Staff's concern, and if I can, please, just for a moment. This strip of land was originally donated to the city by Mr. Ulysses when he, he did his subdivision, which was a family, it was originally a subdivision that was created by variances for four lots with private streets and private, you know, utilities. Then Mr. Ulysses came back and re-subdivided under the two-lot subdivision process, and that's when the actual paper strip right-of-way was created because Mr. Anderson's property was created on one side and then Mr. Ulysses' property was created on the other.
And that was all part of the property that was donated for, as part of the right-of-way?
Correct.
That was the right-of-way was when formed Mr. Anderson's lot and the other lot on the end.
It was actually donated to serve Mr. Firth's property. However, it was actually donated to us when Mr. Anderson's property was created, probably in the early 90s.
It was donated to protect the rights of...
The West family.
Of the West family and that property is now Mr. Firth's.
Correct. Correct. Over the years, there's been several drainage scenarios or actual drainage structures that has been placed in the ground to serve the various subdivisions that Mr. Ulysses has done. On one of, in, one of those structures, actually when it was built, it was placed within the right-of-way. And so therefore, it, I don't know if it wasn't caught. I'm not really sure because I wasn't a part of the development process as much at that time. But since then, Mr. Ulysses came back and he did another subdivision. When that subdivision was created is when we realized that a part of his required BNP was in the right-of-way, he was asked to relocate it out of the right-of-way onto his property. He did that, but there probably, and there seems to be some residual of drainage still left from that original development. So in our staff report, we mentioned that there, there may be some drainage conflicts in there if this property is sold, a private driveway is put in, and no provision is made for the drainage that's coming off of Mr. Ulysses' property.
So was that, so was that why staff recommended and has in the ordinance here? You have two provisions, right? You have two provisions that say any improvements made to, or in the parcel being sold must be installed in such a manner as not to interfere with the drainage of the adjacent property.
Correct.
And then you also say, in the event the parcel is improved for ingress and egress by way of a private driveway, driveway shall comply with chapter 70.
Correct.
And chapter 70 is the one that calls out what you, what type of driveway you have to have, and then the city engineer would then evaluate the drainage situation for all properties.
Correct.
Okay.
What we have found over the years, that with that strip of land actually maybe being used by Mr. Ulysses for some overflow drainage, it was not an issue for that particular area. It was being absorbed by the city property and was not impacting adjacent properties. And we also anticipated that once that property, once our city right-of-way was developed, the engineering would have to take care of the actual drainage that was there. They would have to, you know, install a sophisticated drainage system. So we knew that it could be addressed at that time.
Okay.
When Mr. Firth presented his proposal, he is going to most likely install a driveway. And if he just installs a driveway on a piece of raw property that we no longer own, we don't have any control over how that driveway's installed. So that's the reason why we suggested that you include a provision which basically controls how that driveway is installed.
So you're basically, you've written in here, so option two, which doesn't include any of those provisions, is, wouldn't be protecting the neighborhood if we elected to do that. So really, our question, our real discussion should be between not doing it at all, which, which seems fair to one and not fair to the other, depending on which side of the issue you were on, or...
Option one.
Or option one, which tries to protect all. And, and, but bottom line is, can what Mr. Firth wants to do, since he's doing a driveway, does it require the sale of the entire easement? Or can we maintain part of the easement? I know that we just wanted to be clear and not have a strip back there that somebody else later on says, well, the city's supposed to do something with it. But, you know, things from 15 years ago, and I don't doubt that we're seeing tidal back up, up that ditch now that we've kind of increased the depth of it. But it sounds to me like, do we need that access to do something else back there? Or can we improve that existing drainage within city easements? Because I don't know that we have the easements to improve that ditch all the way, do we?
But the discussion years ago, at least from our engineers at the time, the, the solution was to put a large covert pipe across Costa Avenue that went into Woodland Road into the, into the creek there. I recall $750,000 or something like that to make those, make that improvement. Because all of that water, which is the reason the planning staff in the, in my son's house where he's building, have, have, you know, they've just said to us, look, you got to drain it somewhere else, which, which we're doing. They're absolutely right. It doesn't need to drain back towards the Blankenships or Mr. Forrest or anybody else and it won't. But, Jean, I don't, I don't think we've got the, I don't think we've got the wherewithal at this point, time to resolve the drainage issues back there. Is that, is that, is that last lot there, Debbie? Who owns that last lot as you make the right on the private road? Is that scheduled for development or is somebody building on that lot?
It's a vacant lot that's up for sale.
It's up for sale. But it is a buildable lot?
Yes, sir.
It would have to use the same right-of-way?
Well, they actually have their own right-of-way.
It's a private road there.
But there is an intersection between our paper strip and the right-of-way that serves the Ulysses subdivision. At the very end of our right-of-way where it connects to Wainrye Drive, if you'll notice, Mr. Anderson's driveway and then the Ulysses driveway kind of branches off from that. So that's the reason why there's another condition in your resolution, which basically says that you cannot block that access.
Debbie, the, the last time I looked at that property, and I've only seen it a couple of times, it appears to me there are like three or four lots that would face onto that[1797.78]
of times, it appears to me there are like three or four lots that would face onto that, what we're talking about calling a private driveway on the property that we're selling. And if I remember right, Wainwright Drive has curb and gutter. And so if those lots were to be developed in that, quote, driveway put in, I would really look at that as not a driveway, but a road serving those four houses that would then join on to Wainwright Drive. And I would expect that to be brought up to road specifications rather than a driveway specification.
And that's what we've been imposing on everyone that's ever wanted to develop this property, because Mr. West had sold it to another fellow by the last name of Han, and he had inquired about a large subdivision there.
Then it would be serving the potential of four or five homes. So I don't call it a driveway, I call it a short road there then. And so then I would expect it to meet the same specifications that Wainwright Drive has to meet, and then the drainage issues are addressed associated.
And that's the requirement that we've been telling everyone, that they would have to upgrade it to our standards in order to utilize it as an access.
How big is this right of way?
It's 50 feet by what?
Couple hundred feet.
Hundred. Now, hold up that chair.
Not, not...
Steal Debbie's thunder. Gene, you asked a question about the requirement for that, where it says family subdivision, like requirement number two. What our family subdivision says is that you can have a private drive, if not a public street, you can have a private drive. Has to be in a permanent easement or right of way, not less than 20 feet in width. Such right of way shall include a driveway within its, consisting of at a minimum, an all-weather surface of asphalt with a minimum depth of two inches of asphalt or structural equivalent, dust-free surface over six inches of stone base with a minimum width of 12 feet. So that's what that provision was designed to ensure that if Mr. Firth used it for a driveway, at least he had to comply with some standard, and that was the standard.
So then the standard would be that it would be paved with a non-dust-producing surface by, by that ordinance? So that's what, that's what that...
We just incorporated that requirement into the conveyance so that there was a standard that had to be complied with.
And then because it's paved, you then kick into the ordinance that says you've now made it a non-permeable surface, so you have to provide for drainage.
Well, that's, that's...
And that you have to account for all that in your BNP size.
That would be part of the subdivision portion.
Right.
Was if he, if Mr. Firth applies for a family subdivision, one of the requirements is he has to have a drainage plan that handles his stormwater runoff and handles it in a way that the engineer is certifying to the city, just like Mr. Firth said, that he's certifying to the city through his engineer that he's not increasing the runoff that's being carried by the ditch that we're talking about that's not adequately flowing now. He's not required to improve that ditch, he will, he'd be required not to increase the runoff that's personally carried by the ditch.
Okay.
Which would, would not solve the COVID under Pecosa Avenue problem.
The problem, and we can't count on the one landowner to solve the problem, that sounds like the city, that's down the city's lane. Okay.
I have a question. Does it, to me, option number one, one, where you put all the stipulations in, read to me when I was looking at it as if it would, if the land were to be developed to those standards that we have included. And I'm not sure that, have you, whether the, the people who live on Wainwright have seen your recommendation, but it seems to me that that would actually improve the current drainage problems. Am I wrong in thinking that?
I don't necessarily think so.
Actually, we've had several analyses done on the drainage in that area.
Uh huh.
And I do not want to get into adversarial positions tonight with anyone on Wainwright Drive, because I certainly do feel their pain with the drainage problems that they have experienced over the years, and they've been very vocal and they've been very patient with us, so I want to thank them for that. But our engineering staff has basically stated that they feel like that under severe storm situations, that the end of Wainwright Drive is certainly getting some water from the Ulysses subdivision. However, under normal rainfall events, most of that drainage is being carried through a swale that runs along beside of Mr. Arm, I mean, Anderson's property and is exiting behind his property, and it's not going towards Wainwright Drive. That's under normal rain events. Under severe, they are getting some, they're definitely getting some water from the Ulysses subdivision.
Okay. But that's, that's not the subdivision that we're even discussing, right?
No, but it's a part of the strip of land.
Right.
And so I'm just trying to clarify, you know, the difference in the drainage patterns there and what has occurred.
Okay.
Okay.
So we need to have some more conversation with, at the staff level.
Go ahead, Tom.
Go ahead.
Since we're talking, we're not going to bring this up again until next time, there's a couple of things that if staff could look into. One is, there was a discussion about whether this was the only access or not to the land. We heard two sides of that tonight. If we could find out what, what the fact...
You going to pay for that?
No. Oh, well, is the city going to pay for it?
You're talking about a title examination of all of Mr. Firth's property to determine what his ingress and egress and rights are, and that's a, that's a cost to the city if you want that order, we get it for you. But just want you to realize it's not something that the staff can simply hand you a piece of paper and say, here's what it is. It is going to require the necessary court house research to...
Okay.
Put that information together.
I could turn in one, though, I've got one.
If you're willing to accept Mr. Firth's title examination from his, from his attorney in that certification, you know, that can be done.
I was going to say, we can review this paper.
Yeah, I'd like to see it.
Right. We'll take a look at what's...
I would, I would appreciate it if the staff could look at the facts that are available to determine, you know, what, what the facts are as far as whether there is one access or in fact, two accesses, and we might have...
As long as we understand that what the staff is going to examine is somebody else's work, it's not going to be our individual work.
Okay.
Okay. That, that was the first item. The second item, it has to do with, the third stipulation in here talks about, in the event the parcel is improved for ingress and egress, it shall conform to the city of Pecosa standards for private driveways as set forth in the city ordinance relating to a family subdivision. I know we've been talking around that, but I remember a couple of years ago, what we did is we changed the private driveway, the, the family subdivision to go from two properties to three properties, because it would allow, you know, more development of, of houses on the long, thin strips. But at that time, we were also told that that, was it five? Is it five or three for a family subdivision now?
You, you have two provisions. The family subdivision, you can yield up to five. Under the exclusion rule process, you can yield up to three.
Exclusion rule process?
Two, two lot, what we used to call two lot exclusion is three lot exclusion.
Yes.
And so you could do three lots without doing anything. Okay? And, and the family subdivision is for five lots, but then you get tied into the stipulation. So without going into too much detail there, you could get three houses without doing a whole lot.
That's, that is my memory, is you could do three houses without doing a whole lot.
Because you're using the exclusion rule.
And the, the concern I have, and the thing if staff could look into, is making sure that we don't allow that three-house subdivision provision to kick in. And thank you, Gene, for, for helping with that. So we don't allow that, that three-house stipulation. So now I understand the rest of the conversation, which is, if it's four or five houses, then we're going to get a road surface in there that does have curb and gutter or not?
No, not if he activates the family subdivision process.
So that is something that I would like the staff to consider as to whether he should in fact have curb or gutter, address that specifically. That would be the next point.
And am I hearing the only way to get the curb and gutter is if we continue to own the land?
That's one way.
That's one way.
If we...
Well...
The only...
Yes, you're right. That's the only way.
It's the only way to get a standard road that's included in the state maintenance.
If we maintain ownership of the land.
But you could have a private road, just like the Billups have a private road. Right?
But not in a public right of way.
Right.
Right. And just, just so people know, one of the advantages of us providing this, this land to Mr. Firth is, he would then be responsible for the, the maintenance of it, and the city would not have to, and would not be on the city tax burdens to maintain that road. And also, since it is now his property and his improved property, we would also get a small amount more of real estate tax on it, because it's now not city land, but private property.
And I guess the big, at the root of that was the, the right of way was developed for that piece of property that we're trying to sell it to. In other words, it was created to protect the rights of the owner of that property, which at this time is Mr. Firth.
Correct. And that was, that was the third, or third or fourth, I've lost count. If we could in fact confirm that, because that's what people's recollection is, and that would go to Mr. Anderson's point that, you know, the land was taken. If we could clear up what the ownership of the land was through existing documents we have...
We have only look at the subdivision ordinance to determine the, the answer to that in terms of, if, if, if the, the argument is, did we take it? We didn't.
Right, that's...
Sir, I, I said that it was required, I didn't say taken, and that's correct.
Okay, so then we can strike that one. And then the final one that I was thinking of is, I did have the opportunity about three years ago to go back and look at the drainage study that affects Wainwright and the other areas. And one of the things that, that I think staff could look at, if the engineer could look at, is that was, I believe, Gordon, you're correct, it was a rather large expense to do the entire, the entire project, $450,000 or $750,000, if we're talking about the same one. But that most, when I looked at it from just a hydraulic fluid flow point of view, if we just made the pipe under Pecosa Avenue bigger and didn't do all the other more expensive stuff, that would appreciably help out the situation, because that is, that is one of the main constrictions.
And the other one, Tom, is the, is the, is the ditch that runs past Mr. Anderson's property?
Yes.
Yeah, last time out, which was last week, it's pretty congested and there's no water moving through that at all.
Isn't that the one that, that's the one that goes to the, the city-owned BMP? Isn't that the same ditch?
No, this, this one isn't.
The one on Pecosa Avenue? Didn't that drain to Pecosa Avenue?
Yeah, yeah.
So it drains to those two ponds that are there by the service ditch?
But it just, no, goes across to, I think it goes across to Woodland.
Okay.
Goes across to Woodland Road.
And the combination of that ditch either being enlarged or simply cleaned out, but there's some question as to, is it Mr. Anderson's ditch or is it the city's ditch? I think that's, I think it belongs to Mr. Anderson.
If that was the city's ditch, it'd be like Oxford Run we did eight, nine years ago when we had a problem on, on the Hoppins Court and those areas, we, the public works went down, they cleaned the ditch out, and it solved somewhat the problem. If it was the city's...
The other, the other question is, if we went to the city-owned BMPs from that area, then we have, the property has overflow protection. In other words, it has that, basically, if that pond gets overwhelmed by a large rainfall, it dumps direct. So instead of following the, the drainage, I'm just wondering if we could deflect to the city-owned BMP.
Unless, I can't answer that.
Right, if, that would take an engineer.
I just don't know what your answer to that is.
If, if staff could resurrect the studies and, and if I could see a copy of the, the study for Wainwright, and I'll make a comment.
Yeah, I'm new, and I know Bud isn't even more than I am, so I think it would be nice. I haven't had a chance to, to get out there, so I'd like to...
Okay.
...spend some time doing that. But I also think that all of the people who came tonight deserve a prompt answer, so I would, the reason I voted to postpone is because I'm, I'm going on the assumption that we're going to make a vote at the next meeting. So that's my way.
Just for a second, to ask Councilman Marie, make sure I understand. We had this discussion about the requirements for a family subdivision, and then there was a discussion about the, the three subdivision rule, that you didn't have to have this requirement. But what the ordinance says is that the requirement for the family subdivision would be part of the conveyance. It's not a question that Terry could come in and say, I only want to do a three lot exemption, so I don't have to do anything. The deed, the, the ordinance says that it has to be put in the deed, so when the property's conveyed to him, he will have to improve it to the standard for a family subdivision if he only puts one lot back there. Okay.
Agreed.
So if he improves it, he's got to do it based on that. That is only a standard of construction. It is not a standard of, does he qualify for a family subdivision? So I just make sure we're on the same sheet of music.
We're, we're on the same sheet, it's just that the, the requirement in here, the, the condition does specifically say, you know, as relating to a family subdivision.
Correct. And the family subdivision says what I just read you, that it has to be, has to be 20 foot, has to have some much dust-free surface and that type of thing.
And that's what I am not comfortable with in this condition, in this case.
I'm sorry, you lost me. Okay.
That's, that's where I think...
Send me an email and tell me what you want me to do.
We'll chat after this, but I think I understand where we may be disconnected there.
I think I understand.
All right, we've, we've already had the vote, and we will postpone it till our next meeting, and I would encourage those of you that, that haven't seen some of the difficulties out there that you, I know that Blankenships would be glad to have you out there, Mr. Forrest would be glad to have you out there, we've met out there on many occasions with those folks, and let me tell you, he will call you on Christmas Eve if he gets a lot of orders.
Mr. Mayor, I did want to address that same question, Ms. Blankenship, who kindly asked the question, should you call us if you have a problem? Yes, you should. We need to know about your problems.
Well, Jean's not shy about calling you. So you can look to get called if she's got an issue there.
Okay, anything else from anybody on council? Randy, anything from you? Debbie, everything all right? Okay, all right.
We're done. Sorry, Mr. Forrest, we're done. Okay, let's move on then to unfinished business. The first item is that ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance, subject enlargement of reconstruction of non-conforming commercial establishments. Saw this at our last meeting, I think it passed unanimously, if I remember correctly. If somebody has an issue, we, we need a, we need a motion in a second.
Can you answer the question?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we adopt an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance by revising Article 3, non-conforming uses and structures.
Okay. All right, we have a motion being seconded without the ordinance. Any concerns, comments? Hearing none. Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Hunt?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Marie?
Aye.
Mayor Helsel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Now, let's move on to new business. The first item, resolution authorizing pickup of the employee contribution to VRS for those employees hired after July the 1st, 2010. And Randy has put in, for instance, he's planned two employees. Any comments, sir?
Mr. Mayor, what this is, the state recently changed the rules prospectively for its employees and provided for localities and school divisions the option to apply those same rules, i.e. the changed rules, to persons hired after July 1st of this year. At present, the city by previous election pays the employer and the member contribution rate that is fairly consistent, though not uniform across the state. And the way the code, the, the law was written, we needed to reaffirm that if we wanted to continue that to be our practice. I recommend it to you for a couple of reasons, one of which I think that by treating two sets of employees who are different only by hire date in a different manner sets up two classes of employees, but unless we also change our compensation policies, what this will be is effectively a pay reduction to our incoming employees, and, and that is something that I hope that we can avoid. I think we tried real hard to stabilize the city budget, and we've done that. I would also note to you that, I've done that at least for now, that the majority of the local governments in Virginia, as far as, that I'm aware of, have passed an ordinance very much like this, as has our school board here in Pecosa.
Well, my only comment would be that, you know, I think we need to be fair to all our employees, regardless of what the hire date is. And I would also point out that most of our hiring, I think, Randy, correct me if I'm wrong, was that our police are fired upon.
That's correct.
And we especially want to be sensitive to those folks, so...
Mr. Mayor, as...
That's my comment.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I propose we adopt an ordinance authorizing pickup employee contribution to VRS for those employees hired after July 1, 2010.
Second.
All right, motion made second, we adopt the resolution. Other comments, questions?
Just one, just one question. This will take care of, we won't have to do this every year.
Option two.
This, this change will make it for all new employees from here on out.
Unless they change the law.
Yes, sir.
Got it.
And also, this is reflected in the budget we passed.
Yes, sir.
Right.
Thank you.
Hey, Gene?
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Marie?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Hunt?
Aye.
Mayor Helsel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Let's move on to item two, it's a resolution amending the city's personnel policy. Subject will be tuition reimbursement slash education assistance.
Mr. Mayor, as the, as you will recall, in the budget most recently adopted and to go into effect in a few days, the, the city council allocated on my recommendation a small amount of money to, to reestablish the city's tuition reimbursement program. Yes, we were doing that, I reviewed the policy, which was, in my opinion, in need of some updating. You'll see a copy of both the current policy and the proposed new policy in your package. We are likely in the process, as time permits, of redoing a number of our city personnel policies for your consideration. And you'll see the type of format, you can compare and contrast the two policies. You can see the proposed new one has a great deal more detail, but it has two subsequent, I should say, most significant changes. First, just to put a hard dollar cap per employee maximum per year. The current policy allows for reimbursement based on six credit hours at CNU per grading period, so that could actually be, with two summer schools, twenty-four credit hours per year. That's beyond our ability to fund, and that would allow for one person potentially take advantage of all of that. So it sets a fixed lower standard, but one that I think is fair. Also, it includes something which is new for the city, which is a provision which says if you participate for undergraduate or graduate level courses and leave the city's employment within a certain time, that you will be required to reimburse the city for those expenses of their training. They're not, in my opinion, unreasonable time allocations, but I think there should be a nexus between the taxpayers paying for some training and getting the reasonable benefit of that training. And so those are the two major changes, and I'll wait your consideration.
All right, thank you, Randy. Any comments, council, or any questions, Randy?
Just, how much have, have city employees taken advantage of this in the past and, and how many have gone over what would be the new limit, the twenty-five hundred? Roughly, I mean, not.
Judy may be in a better position to answer, since the, since the policy has been held in abeyance since prior to my arrival, it was discontinued because of budget.
So we haven't had any?
Not in the last two years because we, because we put a moratorium, but we've had as many as three or four at a time participating. And a lot of the employees have left after getting their education without putting any, any time in or paying back any. So this is a good requirement here that we be reimbursed for some, at least some of the costs.
Okay, well, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I propose we adopt a resolution amending the city of Pecosin Personnel Policy Manual.
Second. Okay, we have a motion made second, we adopt the resolution. Any other concerns, comments?
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm thinking that it might be difficult to go, to get the money reimbursed if somebody does leave after they've taken the class. Would there be another way of setting it up where either they pay upfront or we pay half and half or something? I, I just think the cost of going after somebody to get the money, which is not that much anyway, the cost of trying to get it from them might be more than what we would get from them. Is that, do you, am I making myself clear?
Yeah, you're making yourself real clear. First, if we needed to go after them, to use your term, there is a, there is an actual agreement that they need to sign in order to participate, which is a, which is a, something that we could use to go after them. But, but more importantly, when a person leaves.
Hopefully it wouldn't happen.
When a city, when a person leaves city employment, there's a gap between when they leave and when they get their last paycheck.
Okay.
So we would have, in almost all circumstances, the ability to, to work in the context of their last paycheck and/or any leave payout check to, to get that back.
And when the people that Ms. Wiggins was referring to, I believe, left, this was not a policy.
It was not.
So they left in good standing with the city and according to all the rules and regs.
Correct.
Well, I think there's a couple of things that we consider. One is, it's a, it's something that we need to do to be competitive, okay? Basically, we need to be able to trade our employees. I would caution, and I will support this tonight, but you may want to consider this, you know, because it seems to me like you're gonna have to bring it back to us every time inflation drives the cost of twenty-five hundred dollars. I mean, right now, the cost of tuitions in the major universities by the state government just went up fourteen percent. So we've called out a monetary amount instead of, you know, a comparison to statewide tuition average. I know the old policy said, based on Christopher Newport University, it could be the average of state things, but I'm just saying, the six credit hours probably had some validity, but just taking two classes in a year is probably not too bad. But you don't want to say, well, we'll only pay you up to twenty-five hundred dollars, because I don't think you're gonna get that much draw.
But, you know, hopefully also, this is not just a one-year shot.
Right, right. But I'm just saying that when you put a monetary figure in there, it's easy to forget about it, not come back and revisit it. So just, it's just a comment, but like I said, I have no problem with what was said here tonight and I have no problem supporting this, as is tonight.
I can't quote it off the top of my head, but VA has some policy that says something to affect the average tuition or is at the highest institution in the state rate, something to that effect.
I like that.
Yeah.
Instead of going to a monetary.
Yeah, so that'd be easy to look up.
Okay. Okay, any other questions, comments?
Ms. Wiggins, please. Okay. Councilman Marie?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Hunt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Judy. Let's move on to item three, it's an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year two thousand and ten. Randy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Teresa, you still here? If you mind coming forward to speak to this one.
An ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for FY two thousand and ten.
This ordinance is for various transfers and appropriations. The most notable that y'all have talked about is Kids Island tonight and some grants and for FEMA. Those are the, the big ones that are in the appropriation. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions of Teresa?
Yeah, I had two questions. One thing that struck my, struck me is, basically we have twenty-five thousand dollars in our budget so people can use credit cards. And I, I know there's other places that are implementing policies where, you know, if you use a credit card, you have to pay two percent more or some amount more, like school tuition. My kids never use credit cards for that because you gotta pay an extra two percent, you know, some places are doing it for gas. If, if we could for the next budget, look at something to reduce our credit card costs?
There, there is a law that basically says that we can't charge the, for certain credit cards, we can't charge the citizens the fee, so we have to have the fee. So you go through a third party in order to use the credit cards.
That's why for school tuition I have to, is not pay.
And they, and they pay a convenience fee to that third party. We did not implement that, they do it strictly at the treasurers. That's something that, that Steve could probably look at.
But that's something that we have to do, unless we go to a third party, that would be expensive.
Yeah, we have to pick it up unless we go to a third party, and then that convenience charge would be charged back to the taxpayer instead of us paying it, and it would not cost us anything.
And then the one other question I had is, under expenditures, there's a line here in recovery dash IDA, and that looks like IDA, it's either a name or something, for two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, which one?
Oh, it says Maurice, excuse me, it says recovery dash IDA. Right. Is that, what is that?
That's a storm.
That's a storm.
That's the money we got from FEMA.
On this.
Oh, okay.
The storm is named IDA.
Yes, okay. Ice gone, Maurice. Thank you, that's all the questions I had.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we adopt the ordinance.
Thank you, Teresa.
Making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten.
Great. You have a second?
I'll second now, Mr. Mayor.
Motion made second, we adopt the ordinance. Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Hunt?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Marie?
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Move on to item four, it's a resolution making improvements to various boards and commissions. Is someone prepared with some names to insert?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'll start it off and then someone else will pick it up. In sec, for section one, to fill the term, the unexpired term of permanent Howard, I submit the name of James Titlow.
Okay.
His term will expire thirty November two thousand and ten.
Okay.
Section two, for the following, for the person to be appointed to the IDA to fill a term expiring thirty-one January two thousand and thirteen, David Ward.
Okay.
Section three, we're gonna leave that vacant for now, we'll come back to it at the next meeting or hopefully. Section four, for a term expiring June thirty, two thousand and fourteen, Thomas Gooding to be reappointed to the Middle Peninsula Juvenile Detention Commission. And that brings us to section five and the Workforce Development Consortium.
And Mr. Mayor, I recommend, or I nominate Councilman Krieger to continue in that position.
Okay.
And Vice Mayor Hunt is his alternate.
Okay.
And section six, for a term that expires June thirty, two thousand and twelve, the person appointed to the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, Mayor Gordon Hetzel. Oh, boy. The envelope, please.
Thank you. Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made in second that we adopt the resolution with those names inserted, with the exception of section three, and we will postpone that till our next meeting, if that's satisfactory.
That's correct.
Is that okay, Judy?
And if I could get a little leniency right here, I guess basically the, the reason that we're not appointing in the, what the section three was, was a library advisory committee.
That's right.
For the Western Precinct. We had two applications, neither of which the people still want to serve, so we do not have any board bank applications for somebody to serve in the library advisory committee for the Western Precinct. But we'll discuss that and do this vote hopefully at the next meeting.
Ms. Wilson was just unavailable for this term, not that she didn't want to serve.
Right, both, both people would, would want to keep their names in the board bank, however, due to press of other things going on in their lives this year, they, they can't do it. And, correctly if I'm wrong, but I think that this, even though this person is from Western, I think it's open because the two nominate, the two people we had weren't both from Western, one was from Western and one was from Central, I think.
Either way, we don't have a name.
It does have to be from Western.
I was just trying to get the word out.
And I, I agree. So it can be anybody in the city is the point, not just Western. Please, call somebody on council.
All right, we've got the resolution, we had a motion, we have a second, I believe, and Ms. Wiggins, just. Yeah.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Marie?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Hunt?
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Item five, under new business, is a resolution in memory of Claude J. Bunky Carr Jr. The resolution is, is there, and I'll, let me take just a second and read that. Resolution in memory of Claude J. Bunky Carr Jr. Whereas Claude J. Bunky Carr Jr., a native and a lifelong resident of Pecosin, passed away on May twenty-ninth, two thousand and ten. Whereas prior to his retirement and death, Claude J. Carr Jr. was employed for thirty-two years with the city fire department, elevating to the rank of lieutenant, and was a member of the Pecosin Volunteer Fire and Rescue Squad, receiving the honor of a life membership. Whereas Claude J. Carr Jr. served with distinction on the Pecosin City Council from nineteen ninety-six to the year two thousand. And whereas Claude J. Carr Jr. was a graduate of the second ever paramedic class in Virginia and served as an EMT instructor for fire departments throughout the area. Whereas Claude J. Carr Jr. will be long remembered for his long and dedicated service to the City of Pecosin Fire Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the City of Pecosin, Virginia. Section one, that the death of Claude J. Bunky Carr Jr. is a distinct loss to the City of Pecosin, and city council does hereby express its deepest sympathies and condolences to his family. Section two, that this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its passage, and a framed copy presented to his family in recognition of his dedication to serving the citizens of Pecosin. And we'll look forward to presenting that resolution to the family at a later date. So is there a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution in memory of Claude J. Bunky Carr Jr.
Second. All right, a motion made second, we adopt the resolution. Ms. Wiggins?
Councilman Hunt?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Marie?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you, Judy. And the last item under new business is a resolution approving the performance contract for the Colonial Services Board. Randy?
This is something that is required of each city and county that is served by a CSB, and is fairly standard in terms of, with our recommendation for approval.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve a resolution approving the FY two thousand and eleven performance contract for the Colonial Services Board.
Okay. Second. All right, we have a motion made second that we adopt the resolution. Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilman Marie?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Hunt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Mayor Helsel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Randy, any comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have three items this evening. First, I just want to take a moment to celebrate, congratulate, and acknowledge that we're gonna have six employees that are retiring this month, and between them, they have more than a hundred and fifty years of service to the city.[1561.83] No particular order of seniority, Jeff Blemo, Pam Thoman, Buster Insley, Boz Holloway, Joy Insley, and Linda Finch will all be leaving city service at some point in the month of June. Most of them will be, their last day will be later, or the first couple of days of July. They will be leaving us this week, and a few of the gentlemen left earlier in the month. But it is, it is right to take a moment when you have this many dedicated public services leaving, to just take a moment and let you know that for the people you may pick up the phone, used to calling next week when you can hear new names and new voices, that you not only know who they are, but we just take a moment and congratulate them on their service.
Thank you, sir.
Two other items, as a point of information, as council members are aware, the public may be aware, for some time, we along with other communities in the area have been working with Langley Air Force Base on a joint land use study, which is rapidly coming to its conclusion. Council members will get a detailed memorandum on that this week from Mr. Carter, but in advance, I just wanted to say, because we won't have an opportunity to speak to the public again, prior to the July twenty-second, six P.M. scheduled meeting where the consultants representatives from the communities will be coming here to the City Council chambers to do a public presentation, which is open to anybody that would like to hear and be part of that. And lastly, as was in the written manager's report, I'm looking for guidance from the City Council with regard to the rescheduling, either in whole or in pieces, the elements from your previously scheduled retreat. We have, as you recall, some economic development items, we had an item pertaining to Pecosin EK zones and solid waste fund. We can do whatever you'd like to, I tried to provide in the manager's report, some suggested dates from our consultant, who is, would be working with this on the economic development pieces. Should any of those work, then they can be here to help us with that. If for whatever reason the council would prefer to take this in smaller bites, a suggestion would be then to, as you find in the last sentence of the first paragraph, to take the Big Woods study at your work session in September, and take the other two items, potentially the AE zones and solid waste funds, as in the next two months as part of your work sessions. However you'd like to do it, we stand ready to facilitate it.
Okay, so take a look at your calendars and touch base with Randy. Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Tom?
Well, just on what Randy said, as far as things to follow up on, next meeting, in the next meeting I would like to take a bite out of the solid waste, and if we could have a public hearing to start charging for the first solid waste pickup, for the reasons that we talked about in the last, in the last session, that way we can get public input on it that will aid us in our deliberations.
All right?
I agree with, we need to discuss solid waste, so, and I want public input, so I don't know if upcoming is a good time, would be great, sooner the better, as far as I'm concerned, but...
Okay. Mr. Mayor. All right. Yes, sir.
Point of clarification, you'll see in the draft work session schedule, a proposed work session on solid waste options in July, which unless otherwise directed, we'll move forward with. Councilman Marie has also asked that, let me put words in his mouth, that a amended ordinance be drafted pertaining to charging for bulky weight pickup, and that that be scheduled for public hearing in July. And I want direction on that before I put that on the, advertise it for hearing. Please.
Have you got enough time to do that?
We have enough time to do it, if, if that's the council's direction.
How about if we get back to you on that with, because I'm not sure whether we're really ready to go, it sounds like we skipped the committee that served us so well last time, so I want to think about that.
I'm wondering if, I'm not sure whether Tom's purpose was simply to get the public hearing at the beginning of the process, rather than towards the end of the process.
You have to have a resolution, you have to have something for the public to view and read, which means you're making...
So you can't modify it after you hear from them?
Oh, sure.
You could. We have a starting process.
The, just for clarification, for people who may not have watched last time, the idea here is that, of, right now it costs the city two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to pick up solid waste, and we only collect nineteen thousand dollars in user fees for it, and by charging for the first solid waste pickup of thirty dollars, which is the present, we could recoup up to maybe fifty-five thousand dollars and have it be a more user-based type fee. But I believe Gene's is correct, we'd have to give the exact words for a public hearing, so that's something that we would need to do, talk about next time, and if we do, we do have the commitment to talk about it next time, that would be fine.
Yeah, we'll commit to that.
No, we'll just bring the current ordinances then as part of the work session.
Great.
We'll craft that.
That'd be great.
And while we're talking about that...
Does that work? Does that work now?
While we're talking about that, should we put, should we bring, bring up burning ordinance at the same time?
It's all, you know, and that's why I said it's a more difficult discussion than a lot.
It is.
It's more about what, I know you want to run the city like a business financially, we would like to do that, but when we take away services and charge for them, sometimes you get the reverse of what you desire, and the reverse in this case could be that you increase burning throughout the city.
Or trash.
Or trash, collection in the yard.
There's no, it's absolutely gonna happen.
So that's why I said, any discussion of solid waste pickup, burning ordinances, I believe, and I'm hoping that we'll get there, should go back down to the committee that served us well on the solid waste and get a couple recommendations, option one, option two, option three, pick your poison, but just to rush out there, because the other thing I noticed about the budget is, the unappropriated fund balance went up.
Yes. It went up about...
Back above fifteen percent, which, when we voted on this, it was, oh my God, we're gonna go below twelve.
But that's the top of our range.
So kinda going to, right, so we're actually over it. So going to what Gordon said, we weren't in financial straits when we did the budget, pans right out, because all of a sudden you're right back up there, so, all right. I guess I kind of stepped out of line.
We're gonna talk about it. No, you're not, we're okay, we're all right. Anything else, Kerry?
Oh, I didn't realize that was my turn.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, yes.
Did you have something else, Tom, I'm sorry?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I apologize.
Well, first, I really like to congratulate the honor band and also the Pecosin High School basketball team, uh, baseball team, nice, nice reception, that, I mean, they, they really did something, I mean, lightning struck twice, you gotta be very good, and also a little bit of luck, but they were very, very good this year, thirty-five and one, and their combined score is just unbelievable. But a couple of, of other things, one is, the dragonflies, everybody's noticed, we haven't had many mosquitoes around, and I've, I've talked to city staff about this a couple of weeks ago, and then everybody, I've talked to a bunch of people in town, and they all say, please don't spray, and it turns out that there was a meeting about a week ago, week and a half ago, in which it was decided as a group not to go spray for mosquitoes, because they weren't that bad, and what happens when we spray for mosquitoes is, we kill the mosquitoes, we kill the dragonflies, I've been told we kill the bats, you know, we kill those things, and then a couple of weeks later I've noticed, we get mosquitoes back. So what I'd like to do is have us continue to hold an abeyance as long as we can, that mosquito spraying, because it's, it's not good, and the dragonflies are doing a great job at keeping mosquitoes down. That was the, the first item, and I don't know if anybody else can comment on that. And, and if there is something that we can do to improve the habitat for mosquitoes, or get us, some more mosquitoes, we already got that, improve the habitat for dragonflies, that would be very good, because those guys do eat an awful lot of mosquitoes. And then the last thing that I want to bring up is, I'm concerned about the development that's happening across the street on the IDA property, where I looked at the plans on Friday, and the six and a half acres over there is going to be clear cut and then grass planted. What I'm concerned about is, we were, we have a twenty-foot, a twenty-foot buffer that's gonna remain after the HRSD work, and I'm concerned that we're not really setting the right example for other people in the city. We know, what I would propose is, we ask the IDA to leave as many trees as they reasonably think they can while still making the property salable, because it will do several things. One is, it will look a lot better for people driving up and down the road, we know what it looks like with the church lot up there where it's a big grass field, and the second thing is, if they leave trees there, the trees will do a lot to suck up water and put it, and make the, make their much less, make their less flooding and runoff from the land, because a large tree can aspirate, can evaporate up to a couple hundred gallons a day, and that will really help, because when we go and clear cut that land and just put grass on it, we're gonna get more runoff, and as we heard tonight, that runoff is gonna come into the ditch, and it's just gonna be another small increment that's added on, that we really don't have to add on at this time. So to not make the drainage any worse than we have and to increase the aesthetic appeal, I'd like to see us ask the IDA to leave the trees over there that they can.
You wanna comment?
I'm...
Will you take any direction the City Council has on that matter?
We'll ask them, we'll ask them, sure, no problem.
Well, can I comment?
Sure. Are you, I'm done. Are you finished?
I'm done, it's your turn.
Oh, go ahead, it's your turn.
Okay, well, on that issue, we were, you know, we've got some property throughout the stadium, we don't know how long that property will remain city property after we do this improvement to it, and if we could leave, you know, some number of trees, I don't know, three, four, whatever it is, per acre, that could still be used as like city property park, put up some picnic tables, a walking trail, I don't know, something, until it sells for commercial business, and I don't know how much that would detract from what Manford and them are trying to do, to have a few trees left, it may be possible, it may not, but that might work, is, you know, to have more city land that's usable to the public, just thought. Also wanted to talk about the band and baseball team just a little bit, and also understand, and this is totally informal, official hasn't been out yet, that all our youth did real well in SOLs, so our youth are just outstanding, as Councilman Marie pointed out, but I want to kind of comment about, you know, the teachers, the coach, the band director, the administrators, the parks and recs people, and all volunteers that work with those people, because there's mighty, mighty a lot of stuff behind all that, not that our youth are not just absolutely outstanding, but they have a really good support element behind them, so just wanted to say that. Other thing, congratulations on a group of retirees, that's a bunch of experience for the city to lose, and I think they'll really be missed, and that's all I got.
All right, sir, Frank?
Just two things, Mr. Mayor, one is, again, like, like Kerry said, you know, thanks to all the employees who are retiring, their jobs are gonna be hard to fill, I mean, they're taking with them a lot of experience that they've had here for the city. My next thing is, I have a question for Tom Marie, when he talked about habitats for dragonflies, is he talking about low-cost housing, you think, or? What does he have in mind, what does he have in mind for, for living quarters for dragonflies?
I think aqualogist.
That's all I have.
All right, Boyd?
I think it's a food bank program. I would like to offer my congratulations to the people of the city who are also retiring, and I would also like to thank the people who applied for the positions on the various boards and committees who were not selected, there's a lot of help and experience there that's volunteered, we only had so many positions to fill, and we had to pick the best that we possibly could, but I would like to encourage the citizens to continue to do those volunteer efforts, because we really need their support.
All right, thank you, sir. Tracy?
And I'd like to reiterate some of the comments that other councilmen made, I completely agree with Tom and Kerry regarding the IDA property, and everybody who's, the people who work here, the retiring employees, and the ones who are remaining to pick up the slack from some of those jobs that may not be filled very soon. Same thing with the dragonflies, I agree with you with the dragonflies, we're having a great year at my house, mosquito-free, and I'd like to commend so many citizens for participating tonight. We had, you know, people came to talk about the waterways and their neighborhood and Kids Island, and, and some people who are concerned with city codes and policies, and it's just very nice to see so many citizens come out to a, to a meeting, we don't always see that. And finally, the, I wanted to point out that Little League is having their All-Star Tournament here in, at our complex on July first through the seventh, so that will bring some extra traffic that Thursday through Wednesday, down on my end of town, and hopefully some of the business owners will take, take advantage of that and, and be prepared for the extra mouths to feed, and that's all.
Okay. Gene?
I don't have a whole lot, Mr. Mayor, I guess, I've got one question though, and that's on, on Kids Island, because I guess first I want to thank all the citizens in there here through the last few very long meetings, just to get answers on Kids Island and all that sort of stuff. I know we've now said, okay, here's some, here's the money, not only referencing the first speaker that kind of came up tonight, that yes, we've actually put money, at least in the pot, to take care of it. What I got confused about was during that discussion, why we would need to do that through a charitable organization, why would we not contract that directly using a consulting committee, why would we set anybody up to do all the IRS laws and, and all that sort of stuff?
I'd be glad to speak to that. What you were asked to do this evening was basically, and you did it, thank, thank you, Mr. Bryson received money to get them for sort of the next big thing back in the park, but the citizens committee that's been working with us wants to then turn its attention to fundraising, and they believe, and they can speak to it, they're here, that if they were fundraising under the auspices of the city, that they would not be very successful, that they actually need to be completely separate and apart from us in order to be successful at that, so that is their decision to move in that direction, as Mr. McGuire outlined, that wasn't something that the city suggested that they do, but they're here, they can speak to it, but I think they believe that that's key to their fundraising efforts. The idea is, at some point, our money, our city taxpayer money runs out, and the additional follow-on phases are paid through the donated process, and that's the way they think we should proceed. Would you like to invite any of them up?
No, I just had in my mind that we were going to, you know, since the part of the discussion before was, and it is just, I'm not opposed to that, I'm just trying to figure out why we would ask somebody to go out and get donations if we have the money to, to put in the first phase.
We're asking for donations beyond the first phase, because there, the redo of the park and the reinstallation is gonna cost way more than fifty thousand dollars. What we were asked, the council due tonight, is help us so we can pay the bills for what we've already done, and jumpstart it with the first phase, and this is, this is the comment.
What do you see the overall cost?
I don't know, they have not, we've not come up with the full concept yet, in fact, first time I saw the, the board that Debbie had was this evening.
Okay. All right, just...
As long as those three ladies are happy, I guarantee I'm happy.
And I'm happy, I just thought we were gonna take care of it, I really did, I just thought that, that council had basically said what was there.
We could, an option is for us to bring you back and a supplemental budget request to...
It goes back, it goes back to that discussion of the seven thousand dollars, the city was supposed to maintain it.
Right.
Okay, the park wore out, I don't get into the, you know, it was, it failed for a couple of reasons, one, a fire, two, just wear and tear over the many, many years. I just had in mind that we would just replace it, because the city built it the first time, volunteers are not gonna build it the second time, it doesn't appear.
An alternative could be to bring back the cost estimate for the, the park, I know, for example, the, the player that most recently assisted, come, before coming here, cost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that was just sort of outside of our, our reach.
And I think there's something to be said too for community ownership of something with a lot of people participating to work towards a, a general goal, so I kind of like the idea of fundraising, even if we do kick in.
You plan on going out to the, to the same folks and others that are on that board? Because there's been an interest expressed by a bunch of them, that they're willing to, to help you at least to the level that they did the first time.
Okay, so what we're, so what we're saying is, we're gonna put fifty thousand dollars into a nonprofit organization, is the way that we're lining this up?
My intention was that the city construct the first phase going through its process.
Okay. That's fine, that, that's kind of what I was saying, why I didn't understand, and then they can fundraise for parcels, parts two, three, four.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got confused on why we, why we appropriated money tonight, you know, I thought we were gonna just put it in.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry if I, if I missed the nuance of your question.
So you're saying for future growth of that, beyond what we can afford right now?
Yes, sir.
There will be fundraising?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that makes sense.
I'm sorry if I wasn't clear.
No, no, it's, it's just misunderstanding, and that's fine. All right, and obviously congratulations to the, to the high school band who was represented here tonight, and the high school baseball team, which, unbelievable, but, you know, what can you say about that, just great, great job, and I'm hoping that we'll see them here.
I think Judy's already writing it down.
We're trying to get that information.
Yeah, yeah. The, the get-together they had last night at the school was, I thought, well done, and we, we addressed those folks over there last night, and it was, it was, what they've done is just Herculean in my, in my estimation.
Before I give up the floor too much, I guess I'd like us to consider as a council, because it's not just the council this year, I mean, it's not just the city this year is losing a lot of good employees of length of time in service, but also the school system. I'm just sort of wondering if we shouldn't, because of the amount of folks and the amount of experience, that, and we did this on my first term in council, that we actually took the retiring employees out for a dinner. And to express the city's appreciation, and it could be a harbor cruise, could be whatever, but I believe it's, it's a reward that they well deserved, and something that most, everybody on council would say, hey, we need to do this, but I wouldn't want to do it just for the city, I'd really want to do it for both sets, but maybe we could do some caution.
I don't have any argument with that.
It's a great idea.
See what he put together.
That's all I've got, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I, I really don't have anything, other than I think everybody's covered, you know, all the topics that, that I would have dealt with, just, just one item, and I know I've had some phone calls regarding the clear cutting of the property across the way, and, you know, I'm all, I'm all about trees, I really am, I've got a couple of hundred of them in my house, and I, I really don't want to cut, cut a tree down, but, you know, given, you know, given my time on council is, is short, I certainly hope I'm here when we have one of the agencies that we're courting...
hope I'm here when we have one of the agencies that we're courting, that comes in and looks at a piece of property that we have prepared, that we've cleared and prepared, and what they've asked us to do, and will, you know, come and be part of our community. Unfortunately, even the government, those folks that we're, that we're talking with and we're courting, they want to see the property. They don't see a lot of trees, they want to see the property. But they're all about coming back and planting trees. They're all about coming back and putting them in parking lots and all those kinds of things. So, you know, what we're trying to do is become extremely economically involved, so that we can try to, try to help this city and everybody that lives here with regard to taxes. And if we don't get some economic development, we're going to face some, some very tough times. And I think we have some, a real strong chance, Randy, what I've, it's not going too strong, is it, that, you know, we're, we're looking at some, at some federal folks that are supplying us with information of contracts that will be let next year by NASA, and even the Air Force, and we want to be in the middle of that, we want something to show them.
That's why we lost, building on your point, one of the main reasons we lost the National Aeronautics Center over there was we didn't have land ready to go.
Right, and that's why I think that Carrie's idea was so good, is have something that people can go over there and enjoy, and you'll be able to see that it's, that it's nice, just to have some trees.
If they can, you know, if they can save a few trees, I think that's fine, but hopefully the community will understand, you know, that when folks come in there and they want to look at a piece of property, they want to see the property. They're not interested in looking at the trees.
They don't develop around the trees.
They don't, so.
Okay, anything else? It's just 9:30, and my wife misses me, so I need... I'll make a motion, are we adjourned?
Okay. Second.
All right, have a motion made, second that we adjourn. Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, ma'am, and we are adjourned.